All right. I would like to call to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for And thank you, everyone, for coming. And our next item, item A, our first item, is Mr. Chester Beers. He has some concerns about 8 Merrimack Road. Mr. Beers, if you could come up to the podium for us?
Good evening. My name is Chester Beers on 4 Merrimack Road.
And what can we do for you this evening?
I am here to discuss 8 Merrimack Road. I have four items I'd like to discuss. Before I get started, I'd like to give you just a little background so you'd know where I was coming from on this. The property in question, 8 Merrimack Road, was part of my grandfather's -- probably, I guess we'd probably go back 110, 115 years. Then, as they aged, it became my parents', which was my father and my mother, which was a green. And she lived there for 95 years. And I guess as I got older, it came down to me to say, "Well, okay, son, here you go." So I've been pretty proud of it, what has happened, and how they saved the land for the -- just for the sake of heaven and land. And then I was getting to the point where I was going to have to do something, and there was nobody that I could pass it on to. So I was in a quandary, what to do with it, and along came the police department. And I've always been involved with the town. I've learned a lot from the town simply by being involved in it. And I drove nails on the new -- on the old fire station. I never did get to help the police department much, any more than I could, but I wanted to do something, and it came to the point where we need a place for the police department. And I said, "Okay, let's see if we can work something out." We worked something out, worked out both, for both of us. I'm very proud and very happy that the police department was there because that gave the opportunity for the fire department to come to the place, and I'm very pleased about I guess what -- I'm coming from the angle of not finding fault with what's going on, but just the fact that I know that I don't own it anymore, I never will own it, but the fact that I've been on it for so many years, I don't like to see the condition that things are right now. And my first item would be the fire department. The building is very nice, it's just elegant for what they need, but it has never been finished. And as far as I'm concerned, the place looks like the double-edged, because it hasn't been finished. When they put the fire station in, they had to encroach on the PD's property, and that's never been finished. The PD doesn't have any parking, they don't have good access. The rental property, they have terrible access. And I look at it to myself, which I do most every day, and I said, "This doesn't look like it should be the town of Newton's area. You're gonna have, if you haven't got already, you're gonna have $3.5 million in that place." And that's money, that's not value, that's out-of-the-pocket money. And to not finish it, I don't understand why, and I'm here to find out, number one, why the fire department hasn't been -- that project hasn't been finished. I hear a lot of stuff, but I say, "No, I got to ask the boys, the board, how come it hasn't been finished? It wasn't finished last year," and I say, "Well, all right, we'll give them the summer to get it done." But it's not fair that people have to go up there to the police department and go through a pasture, almost, to get to it. It's just not right. They don't have any handicap parking, they don't have anything. Before that, they had hot top right up to their door, which was removed because it had to be to make the fire department the right way to go in. And I don't know why there isn't. I hear there's money, but it hasn't been finished. I just need -- I just would like to know why, so I don't keep saying, "Well, they've dropped the ball, they're not doing what they should do." Why isn't it getting finished? According to what I hear, the contractor that built the building was able to ground save and turn money back into the town. Don't know where that is. I just don't know.
Are you aware of the new sprinkler system that needs to go into that fire department?
I am not on board with that at all, and here's why. In your proposal, which is all the townspeople had to vote on and to go on, you included fire protection system.
Correct.
All right, so, and if -- why wasn't it -- if it wasn't right, why did it go out to bid this way? If it was wrong, why wasn't it corrected before it even went out to bid?
Now, my understanding, because this did come to the board a little later, is that there was an understanding amongst some of the parties that a waiver may be able to be received from the fire marshal's office. It was later determined that that would not happen. When that was determined is when we had to then look into a different fire suppression system for the bay. The offices have the appropriate sprinkler system. It's just the bay where the apparatus is that need a different sprinkler system that meets the current code.
I would put it a little more simply than that. There was a key stakeholder who provided a piece of information that we relied on. That information was incorrect. That key stakeholder is no longer part of the process.
And therefore, it's all right to make the place in the condition it's in?
When you say "condition," it's in.
Hot top, parking areas for the police department?
I think the way I would answer that is, as we all know from being involved in this town, things have to be prioritized. It's kind of what we do, more than anything, is we prioritize. I think the board will agree with me that if we had, you know, an inexhaustible amount of funds, we would have hot topped that already. But we're prioritizing, and I think we all plan to do something with it, but we have to put that behind a couple other things. Most importantly is the sprinkler system.
Well, I really think at this stage of the game, and the way the town is growing, that you're putting the town behind every other -- schools, county, whatever else. And I just don't see it happening, that's the way to do it.
Yeah. You just described the school, so Jim can give me numbers here. The school has a, what, $34 million budget?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven million dollar budget. Were we last year 3.7?
Thirty-three, I think. 3.3.
3.3.
I understand that, but whose fault is that?
I don't think it's anybody's fault, it's what people vote for, though.
Yes, but you don't propose it.
Oh, we propose a lot, but we -- I think we're all -- I think we all understand, at least the ones on this board, that the town is gonna get certain things if they propose it, but if we propose any further, we're not gonna get that.
How can you -- how can you run a -- and this is what this is becoming, is a business. How can you run it without investing in your business? I mean, it's just --
It's tough.
It's a terrible site over there, and I see people come in to go to the police department. Most of them don't want to come, "Boy, I'm going to the police department," and yet we put them through that.
You are correct about it takes investing into a business in order to expand and improve that business. However, the investing occurs from the taxpayers, or I should say, the voters, because you don't have to be a taxpayer to be a voter. And it is the voters that say, "Yes, you can have that money," and "No, you can't have that money." So we, in the past several years that I know, if the proposed budget is higher than the default budget, then the voters pass the default budget. If the proposed budget is lower than the default budget, then we get our proposed budget. Most warrant articles, not all, but most warrant articles that the board has proposed has been defeated by the voters. Anything that has to do with funds, such as putting $25,000 into a capital reserve fund for fire department apparatus purchases to try to recoup some of this money, because we know we have other apparatus that's going to fail and die, and we're going to need to replace sooner rather than later. But we're having a problem impressing upon the voters the need to say yes to these things, even though it means an increase in their taxes.
So it's all right for this to be proposed to the town, the voters accept this proposal, give you the money to build this building and the site work and whatever else is gonna be done, and then because of a mess-up in the department of not somebody doing the work like they're supposed to, even though they're gone, the police department and anybody that goes up there has to put up with that because you didn't do the -- somebody didn't do the job with the sprinkler system.
As far as parking and paving and lines and things like that, it will be done. It just isn't going to be done as soon as we anticipated, because we have to prioritize.
How will it be done?
But it will be done.
How will it be done if you can't get the money? If you don't want to ask the town to pay for the sprinkler system, which they should have paid for to start with, how do you expect them to pay for it later?
The sprinkler system is being paid for out of the funds that the town already is authorized to spend.
And where do you get the money to pave and take care of the rest of the problems?
From --
Well, the -- I mean, the budget, the full-town budget is the budget, okay? And I think, you know, we're in the middle of doing the budget for this year right now. If we think there's room in the budget that we're gonna propose in March, then we'll put -- we'll put things in the budget, such as paving, into the budget. But if we think we're not gonna be able to -- sorry, chief, if we think we won't be able to buy bulletproof vests because we need money to pave, I mean, that's an easy one right there for me. We're gonna get the vests for the police. I mean, it comes down to decisions like that. It shouldn't be that way. You're preaching to the choir, for the most part, here, but I've learned in my five years on the board, this is the reality now. We have to do more with less, essentially. And every now and then, we're able to do more with the same, and we almost count ourselves lucky when we have the same to use.
So you're saying that the fire station wasn't adequately funded the first time?
I would say it was, based on the information we had at the time, and then we found out later. Part of that information was not correct, so we have to find funding. We actually had a, as Lisa was just describing, there is money left in the whole project budget, but our concern might be that we might have to budget in other areas within the town to get us over the hump on that.
Well, I still don't -- I still don't feel as though it's right.
Yeah, I don't think it's right either, but it's the reality.
Well, the reality of it was that somebody dropped the ball and not knowing what the fire protection system was gonna cost.
Yeah. If I could go back in time, I would do things differently. I think there's a lot of head nods around here, but agreeing with me, I should say.
Well, I can plainly see this house isn't gonna go anywhere else. My other question on the department heads. Evidently, we're gonna have the same answers as the signage over there. It looks like a construction site. The chief says -- fire chief says to me, "Look at my new sign." I said, "Oh, that's great." Yeah, he says, "That's all I can have," because they say, "I gotta take it out of my budget." That's not right, people. That's not right. That's not what his budget is for. Those signs are not at all satisfactory for that area. But I can foresee now, with the way you're thinking, that they're gonna be just fine for the next 15 years.
I don't know about that long, but I would -- you're right, I'd give you the same answer on that. It's prioritization. I think if we all could do it, we'd have much better signage over there. But again, prioritization.
So we're prioritization over something that we can't see, such as the fire prevention system? And it's pretty much, as far as I can look at it, and see that we're adequately covered, except for the law.
The key is the -- we are operating under a temporary occupational -- occupation -- occupancy permit, thank you. We will not get a permanent one until that suppression system is completed. And we cannot get it without the fire marshal's approval. Now, the fire marshal is allowing us to operate with the temporary occupancy permit because they have been informed and provided with the documentation showing them what our plan is and showing them the progress that we are making on that suppression system. Should we choose to set it aside for parking or signs or something like that, then the fire marshal could potentially step in and say, "You must step out," which is not our priority.
And if somebody -- and I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, because I see it every day. If somebody goes up there to the PD with their car, gets out of their car, trips and falls because of the lack of paving, the trench, yada, yada, where do you stand then? "Oh, the fire marshal says we gotta do this, we can't spend any money anywhere else."
Jeff?
Yes?
With the suppression system, we know we have very limited funds left. I would love to be able to look at paving company and go in and pave. However, the suppression -- the sprinkler system, we're waiting until that is in before we have the ability to say, "Okay, yeah, we've got $15,000 left over to do the paving with." It's just a case of, we can only spend what we have, what the voters approve in the budget and the money that was raised through the bond. We can't go a penny over that. So if we do the paving now, and for some reason the sprinkler system -- lock your ears, Mike -- comes in $15,000 more, we don't have it to pay. And the sprinkler system in the building is a life-safety issue. The paving is not. I mean, it is -- it may not be the best-looking in the world, and yes, somebody could trip. And I hate to -- this is not an excuse. We have insurance to cover that. We don't have the ability to put off the sprinkler. The sprinkler has to be done. If the sprinkler is not done, then luckily, we haven't sold the old station because we could be, just like they did at the high school, the old high -- old seminary. They condemned the building.
Yeah, can I just jump? No, we don't want to go down that road. Let's not get a message out there that we're gonna have to move back to the old fire station.
But it's one of those things, we don't want to use the money that we have until we've gotten that paid for.
And you're absolutely right, and as Jim said, if the voters, you know, if the voters would give us this, we would do it in a second. You know, I would even throw out there, if we wrote a couple warrant articles in March, one of the warrant articles said, "Pave, pave 8 Merrimack Road." The other warrant article said, "Put a, you know, invest in a sign for 8 Merrimack Road." I would vote yes on both those warrant articles. I bet you most people here would vote yes. I will tell you right now, I'm not a betting man, both those will fail in March.
But you don't know till you try it.
You don't.
Very true.
You don't.
To sit here and say, "Oh, well, we can't do anything."
Well, it's not to say that we won't put warrant articles out there. That's not what we're saying. We do put warrant articles out there because we do need funds. And there will be warrant articles, I can't say exactly for what, at this point in time, but there will be warrant articles out there requesting funds from the voters so that we can do what needs to be done in the town. And it may or may not include things to do with paving or signage or anything else to do with that property.
So I'm taking that you don't think that is a priority at all.
So I wouldn't say we don't think it's a priority. I think we don't think it's a high priority. Truth of it is, you're talking about aesthetic projects.
No, I'm not talking aesthetic.
You -- for the most part, you're talking aesthetics, and when we have a requirement, a state-mandated requirement to finish a sprinkler system, we have to prioritize that ahead of any of these things you've mentioned. And again, you're preaching to the choir, because I think we all pictured that opening with nice pavement, you know, landscaping, whatever, a sign, but we only have so much money to work with.
Well, I just find it a shame that the townspeople voted for you this to be all done, gave you the money to do all this. You saved money, but yet somebody comes along later and says, "We need a sprinkler system."
That somebody is the fire marshal, the state fire marshal.
Somebody was from this town that didn't do their job. And we all sit back, say, "Well, that's how it goes, he's gone."
Well, it's not "that's how it goes," it's just, we can't turn back time. So you --
You're trying to turn back time by not doing what the people voted on. That's all I'm saying.
No, we're actually trying to do what the people voted on, and that's to complete the project.
And it says here, "Sprinklers, Fire Protection Services."
Right. So we complete the project. We can't guarantee we won't complete the project in 2019, but I think everybody here anticipates us completing the project to include what you've just talked about. It might not happen in 2020 if we can't get the money, but 2021, we might be able to do it. It's, you know, I keep going back, it's reality. We, again, you're preaching to the choir, "We wish we had the funds to do all of this and do it soon," but...
Would you put in a warrant article for signage and to complete the paving for the PD?
I probably would be in favor of that. We all have to vote for it.
I understand that. All I'm doing is asking.
Yeah, but I'm in agreement with that as well. So...
And if somebody's -- then if the town votes no, it's vote no.
We have a consensus. Mr. Beers, we have a consensus. Sluckman, Doggett, Burrow, Michaels, and myself, we're all in agreement. That's a majority. So our town administrator is making a note of this. It will be a warrant article on the March ballot.
Okay.
I would say a couple, just in case one fails.
Whatever it takes to do it.
Right. Well, it being whether it takes two of them or not, but...
And then it goes back into the voters' hands?
Correct. Absolutely.
Now, at this point, it's out of the voters' hands.
Yep. It will be in the voters' hands come March.
Okay. Now, item two. The PD building is in a sorry state of repairs. We've had shutters for two years falling off, siding falling off, siding that is broken, lights that were installed never worked properly, can't get anybody back to fix them. Everybody pushes their hands and says, "Okay." That's small stuff, but it looks bad. And when you start letting a building go down, 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 well, you know it, it's on a downhill slope, and you can't stop it.
Have you spoken to the police chief about these particular concerns with the building?
It should not be the police chief's problem. It's your building. That's another thing that's bothering me, too.
I'm asking the question because the police chief is in that building, so he would be aware of the things, and it's the police chief that typically brings us items that need attention to that building because he's in that building.
And the -- I don't understand why you think that it's the department's heads' responsibility...
To notify us?
Not to notify you.
That's what we're saying, is to notify.
But to see that it gets done.
No, we're not saying that.
We need to, no, we need to be made aware that there's something that needs to be addressed, just like you're saying something now. For example, the police chief brought to us the -- a leak in the roof. So he's brought that to our attention, and the board is going to be discussing that in this meeting tonight to address the leak.
And we should note, too, these -- we have a general government and buildings line item, and I believe Nancy did it last year, I think you did it the year before, too. Typically, when it comes to budgeting, we say to all the department heads, "What do you foresee we need to invest in? Not in your budget," so in other words, "Police chief, fire chief, you're not gonna have to budget for your buildings, but you have to let us know," because we don't get over there every day. You have to let us know. "Do you need new shutters? Do you need new lights? Okay, we'll get a quote, we'll try to budget it in for this year," is typically how we do it. Am I wrong? No?
We do actually expect department heads to keep an oversight on their buildings and to let us know when there are issues, because we do not have a, I mean, we have a highway department, but we do not have a buildings and grounds department in Newton. We do not have anybody whose job it is to, other than the department heads, to review what's going on. And that's why there's quarterly meetings of all the department heads and what have you, and that's one of the aspects of it, is does your building or does your department's area have any issues that we need to look at as far as, you know, potential danger, you know, to patrons or employees of the town?
So it's, you're laying the maintenance and the -- on the department heads...
No.
...to tell you what's going on, to go get the quotes, to tee the people, to bring them through, show them what's wrong, and don't you think they got enough to do right now? You don't seem to know what's going on.
Yeah, so...
I know what you want to go on, but you don't seem to know what is going on. I think we answered the question. Can do this all night.
Okay. Again, as was stated by the other members, we are a small town. We do not have a buildings and grounds person. We don't pay for one. So being a small town, without that position, department heads are required to monitor their buildings that they occupy and notify the board of things, issues, for the board to address. And that is because this board, we're not a full-time board, we don't get a full-time pay, we get a stipend. We have day jobs. So we rely on our department heads to advise us of what is going on. We rely on our town administrator, we rely on our secretary, and we rely on the townspeople. We rely on everyone to help us be informed. We rely on everyone to help us be informed. Because we cannot be there during the day, you know, when the police department is open, for example, in order to see these things.
I think if it comes down to it, if you have a list of concerns, because you're a taxpayer like the rest of us, if you have a list of concerns with any building, if it's the PD or whatever, and you give that to Nancy, we'll consider it based on, broken record here, based on available budgets, we'll consider it. You know, it's, you know, if any of these, Nancy or Diane fielded a call from anybody that said, I just, you know, I just drove by the library, a shutter's falling off, we would consider that. But it's, again, we only have so much money, so everything is prioritized. There's not an inexhaustible amount of money where we could say, that shutter's fallen off, fix it tomorrow. That's gonna have to be put on a list, and we have to look at the list. It's just what it comes down to.
So I think a takeaway from this, Mr. Bierce, would be if you could provide us that itemized list of your concerns, we can then actually go through it and see what can be addressed and when it can be addressed.
So we're pushing the ball down the road.
We would have to look into what your list consists of, what the cost would be to address those concerns, and then what funds are available to cover them, and if there isn't enough to cover everything, what priorities come first and address the ones that we can. That's how we do things here. It's how we have to do things here.
What would, I mean, I'll just ask the question, what would you have us do? What do you think we should do differently when it comes to something like that?
I think, because of the value you're having there and other properties you own in town at this point, that you should have a, a building department head or something that these department heads can go to and say, listen, my shutters are falling off. Oh, okay, I'll look into that, take care of it, talk to the board. Instead of putting them through, having to do all that, go get the quotes, bring them to you, you look at it, three months go by, four months go by, and...
Yeah, they don't have to get quotes. So you're saying we should create a job in the town to have a sort of, as Jim described it, like a head of buildings or towns?
I think it's something to look into, because I understand you're a part-time board, you don't have the time, but these fellows running their departments, I know don't have the time.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Oh, I'm just trying to find, I know this, what's going on here now takes a little time to get done, but you're just not gonna stay, stay with the same old plan and expect it's going to get better. Now, the entrance door to your rental property over there, got chicken wire on the bottom of it to hold it together. Come on, guy, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make good sense.
This is the first I'm hearing of that particular...
Well, because you don't have somebody looking at the building saying, these things need to be done.
But I will look into that particular situation because this is the first I'm hearing of it. So I will look into that.
And we also, we have a tenant, and a tenant can also notify us. A lot of us in this room, we've been landlords before. We don't see the buildings every day. So you have a tenant call up and say, hey, we're missing this, can you look at this? It's in the, it's in the lease agreement for us to take care of that stuff in our rental agreement. So as Lisa said, somebody has to let us know, and we can do it.
And basically, that's what you're doing right now, is you are letting us know.
I really don't think it affects the tenant, but my eyes, it affects the people that are coming to do business with the tenant. That's the way I'm looking at this.
Sounds like it, yeah.
The way I'm looking at this.
But we will definitely look into the chicken wire.
Yeah.
Now, as long as I got you in such a good mood, do you think it's time for you people to think about having a town plumber on a yearly call, a town electrician? So if a department has, head has a problem with his plumbing, he calls up the plumber and he comes out and takes care of it? You, I mean, you do it for the landscaping, you do it for your fuel, oil, and yada, yada. Instead of having, say, well, we haven't got a plumber, go find out how much one's gonna cost. The fellow has no commitment to come, they don't care whether he comes or not, but yet I hear there's a plumbing problem in the building?
In which building?
Last apartment building.
In the fire department building?
Yeah.
The brand-new building? There's a plumbing problem?
Well, it's beyond its warranty now. So I'm just saying, just...
Okay.
We're not aware, as we sit here right now.
We are not aware of that either.
I'm surprised you're not aware, when I'm aware. I don't know why I'm...
I don't know either.
We are just as surprised as you are, that we are not aware of something that you appear to be aware of. So we will look into the plumbing problem that you seem to be aware of and find out what it is and what needs to be done.
A list would be very helpful.
As I said, I would really appreciate your list so that we can go through it and make sure we don't miss anything, if you don't mind.
I think the department heads can give you a list if you don't require them to find somebody to come do it, be around while they're looking at it. That's a heck of a responsibility on them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we, I don't know, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we require our department heads to do that necessarily. It might be a case, if you have a secure door, that they have to be around to let somebody in, or they have to be escorted. But as I said before, and I think, what are we, two, three years into that line item? The general government and buildings? So the intention is not to add work for our department heads, because you're absolutely right, they work hard enough. The idea is to have a budget to capture this stuff in and be able to manage it through the town hall. And as I said, maybe they have to get involved somehow to wait for somebody or let somebody in. But, but the goal driving that, again, two, three years ago, whatever we did, was to make sure it was a separate line item.
The biggest problem that we have is the death spiral that our budget is presently in. Every year, while costs of goods and services and salaries have gone up, the board has continually resisted the idea of raising the budget. Because they know that traditionally, if we raise the budget over the default, we get the default. And you couldn't do that every couple of years, or if you have a budget like the school district. Trust me, I'm on their budget committee. They can, they could trim there. But this board has actually sat here and debated whether or not the recreation department needed a case of paper and a package, and paper clips, because we could take that $18 and move it into somebody else's budget to help them, knowing that otherwise, we were doomed. Last year, every warrant article that passed on the town ballot was one major exception, the capital reserve fund for fire apparatus, the one thing that we really needed. You look at the other things, and yes, it's really lovely to support the SPCA and the town beach and what have you, but the only thing that was a major item, and it wasn't all that major, it was, I believe it was seven and a half cents on the budget, on the tax rate...
Sounds familiar.
Was the fire apparatus. This year, the but, the tax rate for the town of Newton went down 23 cents per thousand.
For the town?
For the, for the town. It went up a dollar and one cent for the school. The town, if the town could suddenly recoup tomorrow, have a special town meeting and vote to raise and appropriate, to expend and give us that 23 cents per thousand that the taxes went down, things like paving could possibly get done. But once again, we're in a budget cycle where we're sitting here and people are proposing things like, well, if they didn't use that money last year, and they did the year before, maybe we'll give them half of what... I mean, we're sitting there trying to figure out how to cut from a budget that is already miserly to keep, make sure that people will support it.
Okay, I do need to move this along. We are...
Sorry, Chad, it's very frustrating.
Only because we've been on this for about 40 minutes right now. So I just, we do have some other items, and we have some other people in here that need to speak as well, and I'd like to be able to send them home as well.
You don't mind, I'll hang around so I can finish up what I came here to do.
Yep, what else do you have?
I have two small items, nothing's gonna be discussed about it at all.
All right, no, I'm just saying, I just wanna move along, is all I'm saying. I still wanna hear everything you have to say.
Okay. Fire alarm in the PD building, non-existent. How can that be? Oh, don't, you're all surprised that this is happening. I'm sure you must know about it.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to hear from the department heads on that subject.
All right.
So what's, good to know is we actually have both department heads right here. So if you can go on to the next one and...
I'll go on to the next one. The existing garages that were there before on the left-hand side?
The Butler Building?
Yeah, the Butler Building, as you call it. How have you designated those bays? Is it some for the fire department, some for the police department?
Yes.
Yes. And it was based on need and availability.
And what are the needs and availability?
Basically, when we first did it, when we first took them over from you, what we said is we numbered them, and we said, at the time, Chief Streeter, Chief El Cidino, and Commissioner Mike over here, we said, what do you need? Get back to the board, and that's how we did it. And essentially, we've done little, you know, swaps and adjustments for the past, whatever it is, five years.
Because I noticed the PD department, their stuff sits outdoors all the time.
Yeah, some of it does.
Why?
We'll talk to the department head.
Boy, I ain't helping you fellows out much today. All right. All right, my other one. This is a simple one. I happened to wind up being caretaker and saver and everything else that goes along with it of the 41 fire truck. It was the first fire truck, modern fire truck we've had in town. I would like to get it back to the town, but I'd like...
Sorry. Our fire chief is shaking his head, yes.
But it's finally come to the point where I know the town has room to store it and take care of it like it should be instead of sitting outdoors, which I couldn't stand to see it do, done. But I'd like it to go on a warrant article, so the town votes to rectify a truck back and take care of it.
I agree.
I don't want it done by the board or anyone else that don't know how to do it, how to take care of it. And if it is on the warrant article, that its care, custody, and control goes to the fire department.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I would appreciate it if you could handle that for me.
All right. Nancy, could you take a note to, we're gonna wanna warrant article for that one as well, to accept the 1941 fire truck?
Fire truck, yes.
Yep. Chief, you have details on that, correct?
I can get it.
Okay. All right, so we can get whatever details we need for the warrant article to ask the town to accept?
To accept and maintain.
Yes, maintain is key.
Yeah, I mean, we typically, the drafts of the warrant articles aren't due in until, what's the, January or something?
Well, I'm asking the board, I'm asking the department heads to get them sooner so we can get them verified by DRA. I don't wanna be in January trying to do all this stuff.
Yeah, so we have some time, but they're on our list. My calculation is three.
The most important thing is that it will be funded by the town. That's been a problem when it's gone somewhere else in town.
Right.
That's one of the reasons that we'd accept possession and maintenance.
Okay. I would appreciate that.
Yep, agreed.
All right, now you can move on to whatever else you want.
All right, well, thank you very much.
I want you to know that eyes are watching it.
Well, that's why we're here in public. People are free to watch us and listen to us and...
And really give it, really give it some thought about a general plumber or electrician, somebody that these fellows can dial up and say, okay, it's over and done with, it's fixed. Just doesn't seem...
Well, each one of the departments that you mentioned has a liaison, that they know that they can bring their issues to.
I know, but that's not getting it fixed tomorrow if it's running on the floor on the next week. That's the trouble.
Part of that is the problem called the public works, the wheels of public work grind slow.
They don't need to.
But emergencies, but emergency situations can also be brought to the town administrator, who brings it to the chairman of the board. So there are, in cases of emergencies, there are channels that can be taken to fast-track.
So if I hear somebody complaining about it, I should, I should ignore it?
No, you should still bring it to our attention, absolutely. And then we can discuss it with whoever's doing the complaining, or with that department to say, what happened? Where did the lines of communications fail? What can we do to improve the situation? But we can't improve a situation if we are unaware of a situation. So you at least have brought us a lot of food for thought. Again, if you could provide us with a copy of that list or allow us to take a copy, I'd really appreciate it.
We'll see how it goes. Well, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
But I would appreciate if you could get me the warrant article for the fire truck.
Sure.
Yep, we will do that.
I've had it for 15, 18 years, and I'm getting to the point where somebody's gonna take care of it.
Okay, so we'll have that on the March ballot.
And as I've always heard and have said myself, you build it and they'll find a way to fill it. So I think the fire department's got room to take it on.
I agree. There is now room. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fire chief, you have something you would like to say?
Yeah, if I may, thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Go right to it.
Just to touch on a couple of things, Mr. Pierce, brought up. One, when you talked about the plumber, we've had, just so the board knows, it's because of that small little sink that the contractor had to replace. The new building inspector approved to put the old one back in. That's the issue with the odor that's in the fire station. That's why that restroom was closed. When the little sink was put in, small drain, from what I was told, big trap, everything's collecting, so it puts a nasty odor that, that odor's been since probably the spring time, once it started getting warm. So it has been an ongoing thing, and we have tried three different plumbers. So if the board knows a plumber, please let us know, because it's out of service.
So you're saying you've tried three plumbers and no plumbers would come in to swap out sinks?
Correct. We contacted the original plumber, and the project manager's been working with him to try to get him back. I believe the house captain called town hall, on who the town hall recommended. That guy never called back, and we had a firefighter that uses a plumber who's bonded and et cetera, et cetera. He never came and touched it. Could be a small job, that's why they don't wanna come and just change out a sink to alleviate a nice little aroma that we have. Okay, so that, that takes care of the plumbing.
But let me, the key question, as I like to say, our millions of viewers at home are wondering right now. This is warranted work?
No, what happened was, and the project manager's here, so if I say something out of line, please jump in. It deals the same thing with the sprinkler system, the same individual, required to change the sink. So your warranty work went out when the order was given to put the small sink back, put the small sink in. The new, forgive me, the past building inspector who gave, signed off on everything in the building, with the exception of the sprinkler, gave the okay to put the old sink back because the measurement was wrong the first time. So it's not warranty work. It's gonna come out of the bus, town budget. No, what happened was, and the project manager's here, so if I say something out of line, please jump in. It deals the same thing with the sprinkler system, the same individual required to change the sink. So your warranty work went out when the order was given to put the small sink back, put the small sink in. The new, forgive me, the past building inspector who gave, signed off on everything in the building, with the exception of the sprinkler, gave the okay to put the old sink back because the measurement was wrong the first time. So it's not warranty work. It's gonna come out of the bus, town budget to change it. Because the restroom, like I said, we actually called earlier in the spring, I believe it was, to have possibly an exterminator in there. We thought we had deceased vomit in the fire station because the odor it had. Everybody kinda looked around and I believe it was the project manager that said, "Check, pour some Clorox or bleach in the overflow of the little sink," and that's a regular basis. Might as well take stock and toilet bowl cleaner, because those guys, I stopped buying it. That's why it shut down, nobody can use that restroom, because once you start washing your hands in the sink, and again, it's not warranty because Mr. A prior said you had to change the sink.
Yeah, so we should talk about that aspect of it further. I don't think we need to spend time on it tonight, but I would, I would challenge that, I think, just based on what little information is in front of me right now.
The other question that I have, I'm not sure, I believe the board might be aware of it, we won't mention communities. Since Mr. Pierce brought up the sprinkler system, the original game plan was to get a variance. We know the town never went for a variance. There is another community that just received a variance on a fire station that is required to have a sprinkler system. They received a variance. So my recommendation to the board that could alleviate any extra costs, because I believe the original sprinkler plan, the amount that Mr. Pierce discussed was based on that waiver. So if we can go back to the original plan that was proposed, way back when, when the article first came out and possibly get a waiver, then this sprinkler thing, as you brought up, Madam Chair, the administrative side is fully compliant. The apparatus side, when it was designed with the variance, was designed for a garage. The powers-to-be changed, changed it from a garage to something else, which caused it not to comply anymore. Am I right? Okay, and I'll take the hit too, just like the board. I came in at the end on this because I thought, same thing like the board did, it's all gonna be taken care of. I would strongly recommend that the board contact the fire marshal and see what it would take to get a variance. I know this other community got a variance within a few weeks.
So what we're understanding is this other community, that's an existing fire station, not a new build?
It's a fire station probably like our old fire station.
Right. So what we've been told, and this is not from the fire marshal, what we've been told is that it's apples and oranges from an engineer.
With all due respect, I would get that from the fire marshal, not from an engineer.
Okay.
Because with all, again...
Can you contact the fire marshal for us since you are our fire chief?
If the board gives me the permission.
So moved.
You have our permission.
Very good.
Thank you.
And please report back what you hear.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else wanna touch on this subject or are we good? Okay, moving on. Fire rescue station sprinkler system update.
What's going on with the sprinkler system? Haven't really heard about it.
Well, that wasn't a good lead-in just then, but I'll just give you the quick update. Hasn't changed much. Scott is still working on the design like we talked about the last meeting, and Mike Povero, construction manager, Eastern Seaboard. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, until he finishes his final calculations for pump size and gallons on the ground and so forth, which I know you guys need, and we're gonna shoot to get it before the first of December, which is rapidly coming up, I don't have it yet. He's working on it. So as soon, as soon as he has it, he is gonna call me and in turn I will let the board know.
Okay. Sounds good.
That's for an update.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you're, you've made the case here before in, you know, the plumbing trades, and we just heard from the chief, I'm, I'm gonna go back to school and become a plumber, because they all seem really busy right now. Like, everybody seems to have more work than they can...
Every trade in construction is busy right now.
But especially plumbers, you know, so...
Plumbers are busy.
I think I might be able to succeed as a plumber, but I have to go to school first because I'm not any good with wrenches, so we'll, I'll let you know how it goes, but they definitely, this is our second contractor, right?
For the sprinkler?
For the sprinkler, right?
Second.
Yep.
Second.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
And hopefully you'll have more details at our next meeting.
I hope so.
Okay. Moving on to our next item, transfer station, changing commodities market.
Pete Gagnon, transfer station manager. You guys all have the letter that was written from Joe Simpson, who takes care of our Freon items. And as with every other recycling product out there, it, the market's tanked. So he's actually doing us a favor. I don't know if you've read it over or not, but he's not gonna charge us to take the items out of there, but we're not gonna get paid either. And I know that other towns, he is charging them, so doing us a big favor. He's a resident of the town, so likes to help us out as much as he can.
Yep, we did read that and we did hear that.
Wants to make sure you're okay with that.
Well, we really don't have a choice. It's not like there's another company out there that's going to come in and pay us for our Freon appliances. So the fact that the ones we're using right now are still willing to take them at no charge is saving the town money. It just means we're not making any money on these items. And since recycling costs for aluminum, plastics, cardboard, pretty much everything else has been almost nothing now, it's not surprising the same is true with Freon.
I think we should definitely thank him for turning it for free for the town.
Yeah.
I agree. You should express the board's appreciation for his continuing to take them and doing so without charge.
Absolutely.
All right, our next item is non-residential recyclables.
Yes, we are now getting charged for our cardboard and...
Speaking of...
Recycling tanking, yes. We do get a lot of out-of-town paper and cardboard, and I think we, with the amount we're being charged now to have it taken out, I think we should stop it altogether. It's costing us...
The out-of-town people, not us. The out-of-town people.
Now, I was, this is actually a good time to mention it, but the NHMA conference was held last week. One of the things they had was a workshop on recyclables. And one of the things they mentioned was single, not single streaming. In fact, Diane, if you could join in as well. Basically, if we were to separate our paper and cardboard, we'd have a better shot of being able to make money or at least not have to pay for it. Would you agree with that statement?
Yeah, but how would, we don't have the facility for, we'd need another compactor just for paper and then the one we have just for cardboard.
I think it's something that I'd like to have you look into as far as what it would take for that and for our commingled, you know, 'cause right now we commingle glass and plastic.
I did discuss this with Pete this, earlier this week, and the one thing that we would have to invest in is a baler, because they don't come pick it up. You have to deliver it to, I think Rochester is the closest place?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we would have to, and that's a big piece of equipment there that you would need.
And then you need a truck and a trailer to haul it.
But with all of the information, we can allow the public to tell us what they would like us to do. Do they want us to invest in this, you know, for savings long haul, or do they want to pay, you know, the smaller cost longer, whatever the case may be? But it's worth investigating, you know, so that we can present the picture to the voters.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. So we're paying for cardboard now? We were not paying for cardboard before?
We were not. I think July of this year is when they first started charging us, and I just got the invoices last week.
And what are they charging us for cardboard?
About four hundred dollars a month roughly. Depends on how much tonnage is in the pack when they move it. Yeah, costs average about four to five hundred dollars a month.
Pete, if we could have...
Show your phone.
Yes. So if we could have, if we could have resident, Mike Povero stepped up.
And I am here as a resident. Mathematical equation, they can do it at another point. At some point in time, it's not worth putting cardboard in it, put it in with the regular trash.
The, so when did, when did that...
If they're charging you to do it, don't go through the cycle, I mean, listen, I recycle too, but if it becomes an economical offset, just put it in with the regular trash.
And that's the other question that we need to have addressed is, you said it's about four hundred dollars a month, but what's the cost per ton versus the cost per ton for the household waste? And is the cost per ton of cardboard less than the cost per ton of household waste?
Yeah.
Is it?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but...
That would be a reason to determine whether or not you still, because if it's a cheaper rate to pay for cardboard alone than it is to pay for household waste, then you don't wanna put it in the household waste.
I would agree with that, but make sure you figure all the factors.
Exactly, so that's...
I like to write everything else that takes to run that complex.
Agreed.
So this is, this is breaking news for me, because I was always under the impression the cardboard from, you know, our sign out there with the numbers, I always thought we're in the black with cardboard.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta update that. I gotta get more numbers for the sign.
Because it seems to me, you know, you've got all these Amazon packages flying all over the world. I figured recycled cardboard was, was, you know, at least, like I said, in the black, you know, not a, not a huge moneymaker, but as, as Mike said, much better than contributing to the...
Yeah, it's been slowly going down over the years now.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll look into that and you'll get back to us with the numbers so that we can make some kind of a decision?
Yep.
And even a recommendation, if you would?
By the next meeting.
Okay.
I prefer to shop local.
And so before we, I think it would be premature to decide whether or not we want to continue to allow the non-Newton residents to bring cardboard or to charge full non-residents to bring cardboard.
Same, without the numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, so table for later.
So as it is, I think we need to keep it as is until we know where we're going to go with this?
Yep.
Because I foresee, we're gonna have to send out some sort of mass memo or something so people understand, because you'll have a lot of people out there who'll be like, "Oh, my God, why'd they close that? That's not good for the environment." But if we have a financial reason, we need to communicate that so people understand, especially the out-of-town people, because I've always said the worst thing ever is loading up your truck, getting to the transfer station, and then finding out you gotta turn around and bring it all home. So we wanna make sure people know before they do.
It'd be nice if we had that information for the next meeting. That way, if we did decide to cancel that service, the non-residential aspect, we could make it like as of January first.
Yeah, plenty of notice.
Right, and that would allow us the time to clearly get the message out to the other towns that actually use that service. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, proposed budgets. We have transfer station.
Do it again. I left it downstairs with my mouse. Left my book downstairs. I can go get it.
It's on the...
It's on the table, I know, I just left it there.
No, it's in the computer. Computer.
It's right here, this is easy.
Right. Okay, so I have to ask, site monitoring went up significantly?
Yes.
I mean, it's not just increasing the budget amount, but it's more like increasing the budget amount to account for the excess that, over the budget from this year. So what is it about site monitoring that caused it to go up over what was budgeted?
The lab costs of all their testing. That, that was the unknown.
About to do with the monitoring wells and the peepers.
Okay, so, so this isn't monitoring the transfer station, this is monitoring the water and soil for the surrounding properties?
No, it's for the transfer station too. We have all our own wells to make sure the salt from the salt shed and, you know, it's not affecting the water source. So they check for all kinds of chemicals and, you know...
At the transfer station?
Yes.
Just the transfer station?
We have five, five wells that they test.
And Brookside, I believe.
But now the Brookside Lane and some of the other residents are being pulled in because of the peepers, because we're finding the peepers.
Okay, so those five wells, are they town-owned wells?
The town wells, yes. Yeah, Gillespie tests those. They have been for a long time.
Okay, nice. So the addition is because we've had to do additional testing?
This is DES doing no standards, and we want you to test all the houses, and then they come up with some standards, and now the standards have been lowered, so...
And those standards have been lowered tremendously. I mean, we're talking a serious...
Jury's still out on that one. That'll probably, that'll, I mean...
But as it is right now...
They're baselining, all the information they have right now is baseline, and the standards, they just threw something out there before they could really have standards to back it up, so...
We were at like point five to point one seven. I mean, it was a huge decrease.
It's because of our cancer clusters.
If you know what I mean.
Fifty and one seven.
It's a good reason to lower them. It's the point I'm getting at.
It's, in the entire country, New Hampshire's got the most stringent.
So that's why it increased anyways, because DES is requiring us to do more testing. More testing costs us money, so now we need to budget for the new testing.
So I know I ask this every time, column D, okay, the parentheticals.
That's how much they're over budget.
Okay.
In parentheses is what they have left.
Okay, that's the opposite of the rest of the world.
Exactly.
Okay, so, so it seems that as far as disposal goes, you're running pretty well because you're over by thirty-two K?
Yeah, disposal is actually looking really good. I, I don't think we'll have an issue with that this year or next year.
Yep. So I'm, I'm gonna throw it out there again, and we'll see if the board wants to back me up. I still think we should be adding a five-year average column to all of these budgets. So whatever we call it, we call it column, you know, between D and E maybe. We had a column that has, what was the, the actual, what we actually spent in each of these line items averaged over a five-year period? Because if I look at disposal, you're, you're running over, you have plenty of money left in disposal, you're looking really good. Is that, you know, can we, can we reduce that budget for next year?
That's also a month and a half to go.
With it, but that's what I'm saying, is if we have a five-year average, the five-year will be based on the entire year, so we'll know... So we'll know whether that 32, we really need that 32, or maybe we can, you know...
How do you see 32? I see 17.
Yeah.
I'm looking at disposal.
Yeah, disposal, 17,000.
17,079 dollars and 85 cents.
What am I looking at?
That's what he has left in his budget.
I have no idea.
Yeah. That's what he thinks he's looking at, that's what we think we're looking at, but he sees 32, we see 17.
That, look at the date on that document. This document is dated 11/14. This is four days ago.
Okay, so the electronic document in there is not occurring?
Oh, I've got, it depends on where you're looking, I guess, evidently.
So it's 2019 proposed transfer station budget file?
What day do you have? 10/31 or 10...
We have, we have 11/14 in the book.
Okay, all right, hold on.
It should be the 2020 proposed.
Okay, so I'm in last year's folder.
So anyways, what I'm looking at just for...
It was in last year's folder.
Okay, good.
But 2019 meeting folder.
Yep, you should see the 2020...
It says 2019 budget worksheets.
These are 2020.
2020 proposed budget.
Yep, 2020 proposed budget.
It's on the top.
So scratch what I just said. The five-year average thing, you cannot, you need to keep that as a proposal.
All right, so with 130,000 budget for the year, that's a little over 12,000 per month. We're at 17,000 with six weeks to go. We're pretty much on budget target. So I'm not seeing room to decrease?
Yeah, I'm just saying that...
Especially with the holidays?
I'm saying philosophically, not necessarily for this budget, but philosophically, if we had five-year averages, that'd help us with decision making.
No, I agree. I, I'm just letting you know that from what I see occurring here right now, we're on target.
Probably, yeah, yep.
So I, I'm not seeing any room, you know, I'm not seeing that there would be much of an excess, if anything, over the disposal budget at the end of the day.
Yeah.
For the new expenses?
Looking at this and hearing what you just previously spoke to us about, I'm assuming the $8,000 increase that you're requesting for the recycling has to do with that increase in, or the new charge for paper products?
For the paper, the cardboard.
I'm guessing there's also, you're seeing, or expecting to see an increase in the co-mingled?
Not so much the co-mingles, the C and D and the electronics that are covered in the recycling budget line.
Oh, okay.
And the cost for electronics is, has increased as well?
Yes.
Okay, and what's C and D?
C and D did, I believe it, we went to $85 a ton this year they're charging us as opposed to the 72 prior, and it's probably gonna keep going up.
So that's just the, okay, that's the co-mingled?
No, the recycling budget line is electronics recycling, C and D recycling.
What is C and D recycling?
Construction and demolition.
Thank you.
And where's the new cost for the, now we have to pay for the cardboard, is that in here? That's not reflected yet, right?
No, that is not.
Okay, so it'll be coming up?
So it, we charge for construction and demolition to come into the transfer station. Do we charge, we charge for electronics to come in?
TVs, microwaves, monitors.
So where, you still have to reflect the increase in the budget, but do we need to look at the fees to reflect the increase in costs?
When I took over as manager, I, and I believe I brought this to you guys, I did something with the electronics where I took note of how many TVs and at what cost we had brought in, and we're actually making more than what we're getting charged for the electronics. So that's, that's actually pretty good.
Okay, so the electronics is looking good, a fee schedule versus costs, and what about the C and D?
Yeah, roundabout. I don't foresee C and D going up a lot, if, if at all, but I want to be prepared in case it does.
Okay, and I just want to be prepared that the taxpayer isn't paying to dispose of other people's construction and demolition, so...
Because the, you know, you send us a monthly report, and at the end of your report, you always say, this is what we brought in for the month. So you tally up that for a year, right? That's going into the general fund?
No, goes into a special fund.
That is on the warrant, right? That...
Yeah, when they...
The revolving, yeah.
Yeah, so it's in the revolving fund. So just so everybody knows, whatever that number is at the end of the year, we use it to offset costs later on, right?
Yeah.
We offset the hazardous waste day, we offset the bulk...
Right, so that's later on in the warrant where you say, you know...
And that is one of the things I'm gonna be doing, is writing a warrant article to offset the cost of hauling and recycling, you know...
Exactly, so it's done by warrant articles, but that is how we utilize those funds.
Yeah, just so everybody kind of remembers that.
Madam Chair, I move to include the draft transfer station budget into the draft town budget.
Second?
Second by Matt. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item is conservation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are we looking at 2020 conservation, or should I look at the one from last year?
It's the same.
There you go.
You can fit in right after here since I just mentioned it, okay? How's that? Okay. All right, so conservation, as you can see, is not changing, it's, they're looking for level funding?
I would, I would move to accept this, and sorry Diane, I don't have my book at the thing.
I know, you're in your book.
Yeah. I would move to accept the proposed, the 2020 proposed conservation budget into the entirety of the proposed 2020 budget.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's done.
And, and just so, again, for our millions of viewers, are we at 2 million yet, Mike, for our viewers? I think it's, it's climbing every day. Just so, what we're doing is we're accepting these proposed budgets into the full role of budgets. We're not approving them tonight, we're gonna review them further, but just so people aren't thinking we just blanked stamp.
Yeah, this is the stage where we allow the department heads to answer questions and things like that, that we may have on their proposed budgets. Okay, so we're done with proposed budgets. We are going to slip in our police chief, because he has another business.
Good afternoon, Mike Jewett, Police Chief. I believe you guys have in front of you a proposal for repair of the station for the roof?
We do.
So I wanted to discuss that with you. What had happened was we had some heavy winds recently, when I, in the station, I could hear something flapping around, so I went outside. The rubber roof on the east side of the building had ripped up, it was flapping up quite a bit, so I had a company come out, the one that had given us the proposal. They looked at it, they found that a lot of it needs to be re-glued. Up there, there's a lot of skylights. The skylights are all peeling, the rubber roof is peeling back from it, so that all needs to be repaired before we probably get more heavy rain and snow and ice up there. So I got a proposal, I don't know, I can't really speak too much about it.
No, I, I saw it. I also understand that we had some difficulty even getting one company to come out and take a look at it, so the fact that we have one proposal, we're essentially lucky we got that one. Preventing leaks in the department is...
Probably a good thing.
A good thing, and I would be willing to accept a motion.
I'll move to... Actually, I don't know if we need to move to pay or...
Authorize?
Move to authorize the cleaning and regluing of well loosen, lifting seams and skylight corners, caulk all newly repaired seams and skylight corners by Aladdin Home Improvement for the amount of $1,500.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All in...
I was just gonna say, and to authorize the chair to sign the document there too.
Still second?
I'm still second, I guess.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, and this isn't lost in me, I don't want to be a liar, so it sounds like the chief went and saw that he had problems with his roof, and you took it upon yourself, and you went out and you tried to get proposals, you got one proposal. So everything I just said, you know, the board, I think we need to, if we need to make a motion or whatever, I don't expect our department heads to have to go that far. I, I expect our department heads, you know, to enforce the law, put out fires and, you know, what, you know, pave roads, all that good stuff. I, I think they should be able to pick up the phone and basically say, you know, town hall, whether it's Diane, Nancy, can you run down some proposals for me? I'll be here if the, if the contractor needs to meet with me, if I need to show him something. But, you know, what I said before, I, I believe, and I thought that's what's going on, because again, we have a general government and buildings line item, which I think, by the way...
You need a copy of this, or can I hand it to him?
That motion should probably spell out. This isn't coming out of the PD...
Yeah, we need a copy of that, Chief.
This isn't coming out of a police department budget, it's coming out of a general government and building. So, I don't know, do we want, I don't think we need a motion, but is the board in agreement that that's how it should go?
The problem with that is we don't know what the work needs to be done. We don't know when they're available. I mean, in Mike's case, he's got a, an office manager now that could also do that stuff.
Yeah.
But we don't have a clue what we're even asking, because we don't know the building, so...
Right, but you can ask the questions and get more information. Again, they're available if, if, if you can't, we're not expecting you to drive over there and meet with the contractors, but I don't, I don't think, in addition to all the other tasks that, you know, the chiefs have, I don't think they should be fielding phone calls from three different contractors, trying to track down contractors to get quotes. You know, something Chad said earlier, I would assume we have, do you still call them rolodexes? But I assume we have a rolodex. Somebody needs a plumber, you have an idea, at least of a few plumbers, you have an idea of a couple of roofers. I think we should stick with that, because at some point, we might find that we actually save ourselves some money if it's all being funneled to the same point.
Matt, if I can speak to that just for a second, and I don't want to go deep into it, I think it's tough for Nancy and Diane to do that, I think it'd be tough for my office manager to do that. I don't want the work either. It, it does put a lot. I don't want to bring it back up. The fire alarm system, I'm at number two quotes, I've had three companies do a no-show. So that takes a lot of time. Same thing happened when I was doing the flooring. It took me an hour for each company to come in, walk them through, show them what I needed. We almost do need somebody to be maintaining the buildings. You know, it's great that I can say, yep, Nancy, we have a rip in the roof. She's like, all right, perfect, we'll get it done, and she helped me huge with this. I didn't expect this to go on tonight. I figured I was gonna have to wait a little bit. But it's hard, trying to maintain the buildings and make sure that they're done right. And, you know, we want to make sure that we have the right people doing the work. I already went one step ahead on this proposal, I told Nancy I've already asked for his insurance, because I know you guys are gonna require it.
Right.
So I'm waiting to get that, so I can give that to Nancy before he does the work. It just, it's more steps, and it takes longer for us to do that, and frankly, I don't really have the time to do it, especially now. But, you know, I'm trying, I understand how things work. It's slower in government, I get it. And I do my part, I know you guys do your part. If we could eventually look towards that direction of getting somebody to do that, be fantastic.
Sounds like a part-time job for somebody.
Yeah, sounds like a warrant article.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's, that's another body that we...
Yeah, you're gonna need somebody who knows that field.
Right, but are the taxpayers gonna allow us to hire somebody? Because then I would just propose, you know, that general government and buildings line item, why do we have it separated out if we're gonna have each department head handle their own buildings, you know?
Because they know their own buildings.
Right, so give them their money back and their budgets.
But what if, what if we were to incorporate it into the building inspector and code enforcement position?
I think we're gonna have a...
And expand that into a full-time type position?
The separation of duties, I think, is the key thing there.
I appreciate you guys voting on that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Get the insurance on that.
It's something to consider, though. Code enforcement, building inspector would definitely be able to inspect the building, see what needs to be done or not done, so...
I don't think so.
Just throwing it out there?
Yep.
You know, it's easier to hire a full-timer than it is part-timers, we all know that.
I would have to get full-time.
Okay, so that takes, and is that all you had for us, Chief?
For to move forward?
Chief, that's all you had for us?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is Comcast franchise fee, the letter to the bookkeeper.
Madam Chair, I move that we sign the letter to the bookkeeper requesting the dispersal of the Comcast franchise fees. I'll read it. The voter selected received a cable franchise fee check dated November 1st, 2019, in the amount of $23,937.41 for the month of July, August and September 2019, which is 5% of the total revenue received of $478,746.21. Of this amount, $2,393.74, 0.5%, goes to the cable revolving fund, and $21,543.63, 4.5% stays with the town of Newton. Please prepare a check in the amount of $2,393.74 to go into the cable revolving fund.
That's all in your motion?
You're just reading, you're just reading the letter.
I said, my motion was to sign the letter and that I would read the letter.
And nobody seconded the motion?
Not yet.
Okay, Matt seconded it, thank you.
I seconded the signing.
And just for clarification, you said 63 cents, it was 67 cents?
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Just for clarification, for the $21,543.67, the 4.5%. Just in case somebody's doing the math.
That's perfectly acceptable.
One of our followers at home.
All right, and we had the second from Matt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item is to review the bids for the statistical reevaluation.
I'll take you can do that up here.
No, I don't think so either, I was thinking the same thing, because, and I'm trying to open it, it's opening slowly, but I would think we're gonna be talking numbers and potentially counter offers.
All right, okay.
Okay, so before we discuss it in public, we will determine in non-public whether or not it can be discussed in public, or what part can be discussed in public.
Yeah, that's a better...
Because I certainly don't want people thinking that we're doing things behind closed doors either.
No, no, we will have to award the bid in public.
Right, right.
Okay.
We, for the viewers at home, 91A allows us in any sort of contract negotiations to keep some of that stuff non-public, so...
Correct. Okay, so other business. I would like to announce, or I would like to accept the resignation of the Planning Board Administrator Assistant and Secretary to the Board of Appeals. I suppose that's a motion.
Do we need a motion?
We don't need a motion for that, do we?
No, it's just announced.
No, yeah. So we received, so I would like to offer our gratitude for her service.
Yeah, because if that was a motion, I'd vote no, because I'd want her to stay.
Agreed. Unfortunately, we don't have that option.
Right, so with, with thanks, we recognize that resignation.
Correct. We have approval of minutes?
Madam Chair, I move the adoption of the public and non-public minutes dated November 5th, 2019.
Second?
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Which one, this one?
Yeah.
I move to sign the vendor manifest dated November 19th, 2019, in the amount of
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to assign the payroll manifest for pay period October 27th to November 9th, 2019, with the pay date of November 14th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, right here.
Mm-hmm, those two.
I move to sign Veterans Tax Credit for tax year 2020 for tax map 4-5-14-3.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I, I move to sign intent to cut timber for tax maps 13-3-12, 13-3-15, and 13-3-16.
Second.
Are we aware if conservation got their copy and had any input on this?
This is the one that happened prior to pulling the application, so this is just getting the bills out to them.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had that clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that we sign the intent to cut timber for tax maps 14-1-4-1, 14-1-4-2, and 13-3-14.
Second?
Second by Matt. Any discussion? And just for clarification, this is the same situation? The work's already been done? Yeah, for all three of them. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that we sign the intent to cut timber for tax map 13-3-13.
Second by Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Nothing at this time.
All right, then, at this point, we would move to go back into non-public? Rather than adjourning, correct?
I'll move, move to go back and, move to go into non-public under 91-A, thread, colon, 3, normal numeral 2 subsection A.
A, correct.
That's a reputation.
Second?
Actually, that's disciplinary.
Oh, okay.
And seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, so don't leave your TV on, 'cause we're not coming back. So consider this the end of the TV.